I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through, and this workshop, through live streaming on VB schools dot com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom through the link below. The speaker portion, I can read it, I'll read it now and read it again later. The School Board will hear public comment, both agenda and non-agenda items at the August, at the School Board meeting to follow. Citizens who would like to can speak up to speak either in person or electronically. That was up until noon today. All speakers, the School Board has determined in-person speakers will be heard before speakers speaking electronically, participating electronically. Agenda and non-agenda item speakers will be heard as set forth in the agenda. Person signed up to speak in person will be required to remain outside the building, and we'll repeat more about that later. So with that, I will convene this meeting, this School Board workshop on this 11th day of August 2020. And I will begin by noting that we have two colleagues participating remotely via Zoom due to illness. And that's, do you want to share, Mrs., Madam Clerk?
We have Kimberly Melnick, who is present on Zoom. Ms. Weems, at the present time, is not.
Okay, so we will keep posted on that, or if she'll, or if it will be, and we'll check again with the formal meeting. Okay, so that really covers School Board admin matters and reports. We have a lot, but I do want to offer the chance for other colleagues, if there's anything, as long as we honor a timeline, because we do have, again, the, the school reopening is always first and foremost on people's minds, but there's other important matters going on. So now's the chance, if anyone has anything, what they would like to quick share. Okay, seeing none, we will, we will go to Item B update on the reopening of schools. And it looks like we, does Dr. Spence want to start with some comments, or Dr. Bergen?
Well, I think, I think Dr. Bergen is, I just wanted to check with the board on the agenda, so we have the construction projects update as well tonight. And so just reminder of that from a time check standpoint, in terms of needing to, we want to honor this conversation as well, but we would need about 10 minutes, I think. Tony, is that, is Tony outside? He's here. Does that sound about right, about 10 minutes for that update?
Probably more than 15 to 20.
Okay. So we always have the opportunity to do that after the formal meeting, and I just want to remind you of that possibility, but just time check with you in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, as well as this part of the workshop too. Yes, Mrs. Anderson?
No, that's all.
Okay.
That's why I suggest that we maybe think about doing that part after the formal meeting.
Okay, welcome, Dr. Bergen.
Thank you, Mrs. Rye, and good afternoon to you, to Vice Chair Melnick in the cloud, to Dr. Spence, and to all of our parents and staff and students who may be watching this presentation from a remote location. My name is Mark Bergen, I'm the Chief of Staff for the School Division, and this afternoon, myself and members of our senior staff, I will be providing another update for the Board and our community on our planning efforts for the new school year. I'll begin this presentation by reviewing the current health metrics and summarizing the results of the student registration verification process, as well as that for the staff. I'm then going to introduce Mr. Freeman, who will provide an update of our operational planning efforts. He'll be followed by Dr. Rogers and Dr. Robertson, who collectively will be providing updates on curriculum and instruction, a brief overview of the planning efforts towards the Virtual Learning Center, and an update on professional development for teachers and administrators. They'll then reintroduce me, and I'll conclude the presentation by highlighting our ongoing information series hashtag VB safe together, and open the floor up to your questions. So this is a screenshot that might look familiar to you from when we were last together at the retreat, except this is an updated screenshot that I took yesterday from the Virginia Department of Health website. This particular screenshot indicates percent positivity for the eastern region since mid-March. You'll notice that I've added a green line towards the bottom, which marks the threshold for our metric on percent positivity, which is all measures below 5%. And I've added a red line, which marks the threshold of 10% and above for our red zone. Of course, in between the green and the red lines would be our yellow zone of percent positivity, anything between 5 and 10%. So to the golden squiggly line, you'll see that the seven-day rolling average for percent positivity has fluctuated over the past five months. It spiked above 10% in late March and continued through April, and then steadily declined and fell below 5%. I'm sorry, let me repeat that part. It fluctuated over five months. After spiking at 10% in late March and continuing through April, it steadily declined and fell below 5% on June 5th at 4.5%. And then we actually were in the green zone for three weeks until June 28th, until it began to climb again throughout July to an all-time high for July of 12.2% on July 18. Since then, over these past three weeks, the percent positivity has modestly trended down to its current rate of 9.7%, which would put us in the yellow zone as of today, 4% This is another screenshot from the Virginia Department of Health website, again, from yesterday, and this indicates the number of new cases of COVID-19 in the eastern region on a daily basis. So again, there's a green line and a red line. The green line towards the very bottom of the chart, which may be hard to see because it bleeds right into the bottom, it indicates when there are 26 or fewer cases per day on a seven-day rolling average, and the red line indicates a threshold of 265 or more cases per day. Of course, between 26 and 265 would be the yellow zone. As indicated by the golden rod line, on March 30, the seven-day rolling average of new cases was below the green line at 23.6, and it remained relatively flat within the yellow zone for nearly three months up through July 11. Since July 11, the number of new cases has jumped and remained in the red zone with an all-time high of 483 cases on July 25th. Since July 25th, there has been a modest decline over these past weeks to the current level of 357, 350.7 cases per day, which of course would put us in the red zone by number of new cases, because it's well above 265. So that's the review of the health metrics. Next, I'd like to share with you the results of the student registration verification, and then I'll review the results of the staff verification. You'll notice that 70% of our families have completed the process when you add together what is in green and in red. 42% of the 70% have selected Option 1 for face-to-face instruction for their children when safer to do so, and 28% have selected Option 2 for virtual learning through the VLC. Regarding the 30% of the families who have not yet completed the process, parents have until midnight tomorrow to make the selection for each of their children. School administrators, counselors, and other school-based staff were busy in their offices today making personal contact with these families, and they will continue to do so tomorrow. After midnight tomorrow, for students whose parents have not made a selection and for whom we were not able to reach by telephone, we will use a default for these children of Option 1 and begin scheduling those students for face-to-face learning when safer to do so. This slide contains a summary of the student registration verification by level, indicating only slight variances between elementary, middle, and high, reading from left to right. The variances range from 40 to 43% of parents opting for Option 1 in-person instruction, and a range of 27 to 30% for Option 2, VLC, and the unverified or the not-yet-completed families range from 28 to 31% by level. Moving on to the staff verification, this has been completed as of last week. This slide summarizes the verification totals for all of our school-based instructional staff, as indicated by the blue on this particular graphic. Of the 4,493 instructional staff members across the entire division, approximately 14% of them, or 632 teachers, have indicated a preference for assignment to the Virtual Learning Center, with the remaining 86% of the instructional staff, or 3,861 teachers, indicating their preference for in-person instruction. So as I did with the student results, let me break this down for you by level. From left to right is elementary, middle, and high. You'll notice the small, smallest percentage of the three for virtual assignment is at the elementary level, with just 11% of the respondents, or 151 teachers, indicating a preference for a position at the elementary level for the VLC, compared to 16.5% or 80 teachers at the middle school level, and 17% or 102 teachers at the high school level indicating a preference for a virtual teaching assignment. And this is one more way to look at this total group. So this is looking at individuals through various endorsements. So beginning on the left, a total of 12.5% or 76 of our special education teachers have expressed a preference for virtual assignment, compared to, in the middle, 15% or 66 teachers of art, music, and PE. And finally, to the far right, less than 9% or 35 total specialists, which would include individuals such as instructional technology specialists, library media specialists, reading specialists, math coaches, 9% or 35 of them requesting an assignment at the VLC. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, and he's going to provide a brief update on our operational planning efforts. Mr. Freeman?
Before he comes up, I just want to clarify, on the one slide about the percentage of parents, so the percentages were right in terms of the percentage of parents who have selected each of those options, and then the 30% remaining out, but if you take out the 30% who have not yet selected an option, what we would tell you is that 60% of our parents have selected Option 1, 60% of those who've made a selection, 60% have selected Option 1, and 40% have selected Option 2. I thought that was important, that you have that additional piece of information. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Dr. Spence. Just have a couple of operational updates for you tonight. At the last School Board meeting, I mentioned that we were discussing school bus mitigations with our panel of physicians. Since that time, we've confirmed with the Virginia Department of Health and our panel of physicians that, in some cases, it would be an appropriate balance of risk to assign two students per seat. We intend to use this latitude only when needed to ensure that we can transport all of our students who requested transportation to school. When necessary, we will prioritize seating members of the same household together, and then look to keep students from the same bus stop together. All of the same mitigations apply. Windows will be open to the maximum extent practicable. Masks will be required. Good hand hygiene, hand hygiene should be practiced before and after, and buses will be cleaned regularly throughout the day. Once the registration process closes, we will be able to accurately plan our bus routes. It is incredibly important that families complete the registration process, including transportation. To receive transportation, families must request it when registering. We'll provide a full transportation update at the next School Board meeting that will primarily be focused on transportation for this school year. We will, however, also share some other general transportation topics. From a facility standpoint, you may have seen some information being shared about classroom layouts, particularly at the elementary school level. We will be communicating with schools later this week to ensure that schools have the most up-to-date information for how to set up their classrooms, including classrooms that have tables rather than desks. We're still awaiting the final registration data, however, we remain confident that we will be able to set up our classrooms with three feet of distancing, including our classrooms that currently have tables. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rogers to discuss teaching and learning plans.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, I will provide you with an update on the Department of Teaching and Learning's plan for opening in the fall. You'll remember this slide from your previous meeting, as it outlines the key aspects of our teaching and learning plan for the 2020-21 school year, and the key differences from our emergency learning plan. At your last meeting, you were provided with detailed information on the two options related to school opening. We shared a draft schedule, draft schedules, and provided information on what virtual learning would look like for the 2020-21 school year. And I'd like to reiterate two of the most significant differences for next year. The first of which, of course, is attendance and participation. Attendance in virtual learning during the 2020-21 school year is compulsory, and participation in synchronous and asynchronous activities is required. Attendance will be taken during synchronous lessons with the teacher, and participation will be monitored by the teacher during synchronous lessons and through student interaction within Schoology. Flexibility, of course, will be provided for students who, for whatever reason, are not available to participate when synchronous instruction is occurring. We will also be providing guidance and professional learning to teachers on how to record their synchronous lessons when appropriate to upload into Schoology for students who are not able to participate when synchronous instruction is provided. Additionally, we are also working with students and families, we're also working to provide students and families with some support in the evening with live synchronous support. Next is assessment and grading. Unlike the emergency learning plan in spring of 2020, both virtual learning and in-person learning will be assessed and graded. Teachers will assess student readiness in September based on diagnostic and formative assessments. We will support staff with identifying where students are academically and create academic plans to support all of our students. Now I'd like to share a little bit about how we're being diligently, how we're diligently preparing for 100% virtual learning. So in addition to adjusting curriculum and pacing that was shared with you in your last few meetings, if you remember, every Monday, and we call them moving Mondays, from spring break up until the end of the school year, was spent on providing professional learning opportunities to build teacher knowledge and understanding of our digital tools and strategies in order for them to be successful in a virtual environment. In this past April, our instructional technology coordinates began to train every school's instructional technology specialist, or ITSs, on the best platforms for connecting with students while teaching remotely. So they worked on three platforms, of course Zoom and Google Meet, which we have access to, and then we also have the Big Blue Button, which is a third-party application that our teachers have access through Schoology. We also provided professional learning on using other synchronous recording tools that our teachers can use to provide engaging assignments asynchronously for our students. And of course, during the summer, and all throughout this summer, we've been providing essential training for our teachers based on their specific teaching assignments in order to prepare them for this coming school year. So some examples of this include providing opportunities for them to know about the curriculum updates that are based on the changes that we've made as a result of our extended closure, best practices for assessing students within the virtual learning environment, and of course, just successful instructional practices in general. So our new teachers, of course, all of our new teachers will receive mandatory training on the use of Schoology. And the Department of School Leadership and the Department of Teaching and Learning, we're partnering on an essential session for all of our staff to be trained on successful strategies and expectations for teaching and leading virtually. We're also providing our instructional coaches, and that's our gifted resource teachers, our math and literacy specialists, our ITSs, and our library media specialists, on training for coaching, student-centered coaching, with an emphasis on virtual coaching, to better be able to provide support to our classroom teachers in a virtual environment. Our ITSs began their training last week, and many of the topics that they explored are very specific to the strategies to support teachers with teaching virtually. Lastly, we've also used the summer months to provide essential training for our administrators, and that training is focused on instructional best practices, tips, and tricks to use with Schoology, as well as social-emotional learning, so that they are better able to assist teachers in navigating the start of the school year. I want to talk a little bit about the student and staff support. So we continue to plan and provide support to our students to be successful, and for example, with our students with disabilities, the case manager will be a special education teacher from the student's home school or school of attendance if they are assigned to another building for a program or the services, and that will happen even during transitions to temporary virtual instruction. So for option number two, the case manager will be a special education teacher that's assigned to the VLC, which may or may not be a teacher from that student's home school or school of attendance. And of course, we will make every effort to assign students to a case manager from their home school. However, it's important to note that this will be dependent upon student enrollment preferences, as well as staff preferences. It's also important to note that if it's a case manager from the home school or the school in attendance, that he or she may not be the case manager that the student had the previous year. And regarding high school courses, our school counselors continue to support our students and families in answering questions about courses and electives with the schedule. I certainly want to keep encouraging our families to do so. And as has been shared previously, our goal is to offer as many elective classes as possible in both Options 1 and 2. And availability of courses, of course, are based on several factors, to include student enrollment, availability of staff, and our ability to implement guidelines as provided by the CDC and the Virginia Beach Public Health Department. So for parent support, we continue to take feedback that's received from families daily, as well as staff, and we will be creating resources to support our parents and families to better be able to successfully navigate and assist their children with virtual learning. We are discussing the possibility of creating a Schoology course for our parents to be able to take, that will provide them with a learning experience with Schoology, to better be able to collaborate with their teachers and to support their children at home. We also continue to look for opportunities to share accurate information with our families. So for example, as you know, yesterday, we held three small community information sessions to be able to assist them in answering questions that, and provide information on how we are supporting our students with disabilities, our students who have been identified as gifted learners, and our students who are enrolled in our academies, and Advanced Technology Center, and the Technical Center. And speaking of technology, regarding technology access, we continue to remain committed to working to ensure that our students have access to technology as well as internet. All of our students will be provided with a Chromebook, as you know. Our pre-K and kindergarten students will be provided with an iPad. Families still have the ability to request Wi-Fi hotspots if needed, and information on how to request a hotspot can be found on our customer support site or by calling the number 263-1111 for assistance. And I will now turn the discussion to Dr. Robertson.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Good afternoon, thank you, Dr. Rogers. In the last Board meeting, I shared that you would be receiving more information about the Virtual Learning Center and how it will operate to support families, staff, and schools. The next few slides will give you an overview of the Virtual Learning Center, an innovative concept to support learning. Families that choose Option 2 will learn in a virtual setting for the first semester or term of the year. Staff that express a preference to teach or work in Option 2 and are selected based on student need to teach or work in Option 2 will also remain in the virtual setting for the first semester or term. And this virtual setting is referred to as the Virtual Learning Center. Both staff and students, regardless of whether they are in Option 1 or Option 2, will have similar expectations as they relate to teaching and learning. To assist in developing this novel approach to supporting student and staff needs as well as teaching and learning, I have formed an executive leadership team, and I am pleased to announce this leadership team. That includes Dr. Kip Rogers, Chief Academic Officer, our Elementary Program Director, Retired Principal Extraordinaire Barbara Sessoms, to support our Secondary 612 program, Retired Extraordinaire Principal Joe Burnsworth, and our central support team, we're supported by Rodney Myers-Dobbins, the Director of the Office for Programs for Exceptional Children, Laura Silverman, the Director of Title 1, Chris Bruno, Coordinator in the Department of Technology, and Bernard Platt, the Director of Human Resources. This group will meet regularly to plan, monitor, and oversee VLC staff, students, and programs. A key objective of Option 2 is to keep as many students and teachers connected to their home school as possible. As we approach roughly 40% of our families choosing Option 2, with a lesser percentage of staff preferring Option 2, we will exhaust all options to best meet the needs of as many students and staff as is possible. We also recognize that invariably, we will have both students and staff that may be learning alongside students from other schools, or be teaching students from other schools. When this occurs, and to ensure these students and staff remain connected at the home, to their home school, we will have students concurrently enrolled at the home school, and we will develop guidelines, expectations, and avenues for both groups to maintain their connections. For example, a student in the VLC can play athletics, participate in clubs and activities, or run for office at their home school. Staff can request, when necessary, to report to their home school to access resources or participate as a club sponsor, coach, or attend meetings. In creating a schedule for students in Option 1, we must lower class sizes to a number that will meet physical distancing guidelines. This one constraint will result in classes in Option 2, whether they are home-based or cloud-based, to be larger, as no additional staff are budgeted to schools. A trade-off, if you will, for having larger class sizes in Option 2 is that these teachers will not have daily duties and other responsibilities, like eating lunch and breakfast with your students, that come with providing in-person instruction. Over the next two-plus weeks, all schools and the VLC leadership team will be feverishly working to create and schedule all students and staff. This process usually occurs over a three-to-four-month period, yet we have 10 days to do it, and under these circumstances. Schools have been preparing and training, which will help them meet this ambitious timeline, as failure in this option is not, or failure in this task is not an option. I trust our school leaders and believe they are doing their absolute best to put together what I characterize as a thousand-piece puzzle they've never seen before, in the dark, with 50 pieces missing. And I'm hopeful, very hopeful, that families and staff will support us in this work over the next couple of weeks. In May, the Department of School Leadership surveyed school-based administrators to assess their learning from the emergency learning plan. In May, the Department of School Leadership surveyed school-based administrators to assess their learning from the emergency learning plan to then determine what professional learning would be most needed this summer. We then completely revamped the planned professional learning and developed a new summer leadership series that is noted on this slide. In particular, we, we wanted to ensure administrator professional learning was aligned to teacher professional learning, as well as in areas to support leadership in this new environment. Essential sessions are noted on this slide, and I want to note as an example that in the health, safety, and operational procedures training, staff are given guidance on health and safety operations, such as no large group gatherings, how to set up your classroom, and use of PPE. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Bergen.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Board members, last Thursday, we launched a five-part series hashtag VB safe together. And the second installment of, of this five-part series is scheduled for this Thursday. The overall purpose of this campaign is to allow us to promote safety, compassion, and empathy within our VB CPS community. Our Department of Communications and Community Engagement is encouraging everyone to submit pictures via the hashtag of yourself and your family wearing your face coverings while working, volunteering, and giving back to the community. Also, prior to each of these sessions, we are inviting the community to submit questions related to the division's planning efforts for the new school year so that we can address them during the session. Each of these sessions is being hosted by different members of our central support team and will focus on a different aspect of our reopening plan as you see outlined on this slide. So again, our second session will be this Thursday evening from six to seven and will be led by our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Dr. Lakish Parrot. The session will focus on being safe in our global community. We invite all of you to join us and together to be safe. And with that, our chief officers and, uh, our central support team stands ready to begin addressing some of your questions about our planning efforts.
And Dr. Bergen, does the staff have any, uh, preference on whether we or just ta- we'll just take the, start out taking the questions and whatever staff member wants to step forward or to do it in the work? We'll, we'll try it that way, I guess, first?
Yeah.
So it looks like we're starting with Mr. Edwards.
The session last Thursday, was there any information that was provided to the public and, and our discussions within the staff that would be helpful for us to hear?
I do, I mean, I think there was a lot, it was an hour and we answered a lot of questions. I think that link was shared with the board. And, um, it's also available on our division website. I think on our YouTube channel, is that correct? And so, yes, we would encourage folks who weren't able to attend that session to go back and review the session. And each of the sessions will be recorded and put up on the division's YouTube channel.
For those of us who plead guilty who have not seen it, is there anything that we would be helpful for us to know now, any?
The parent connections will be recorded as well and put up. They're not up yet. So just as a reminder, some of the delay in getting those up to our YouTube sites is that we have to make them ADA compliant, which means they have to have subtitles. So that takes a little bit of time.
Mrs. Ricks.
Okay, um, this is concerning the operational updates. I guess, um, Mr. Freeman. So, um, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if it was during our meeting, uh, school meeting, or it was our workshop, but I specifically asked about, uh, desk, okay? And we were told that you thought you had enough desk for everybody. And now I am not seeing that. I'm seeing from teachers that there aren't, and there are even, um, there's tables that are set up and we were given, we were sent a, an email today of different configurations to set up these tables. And these kids are not being, um, sufficiently distanced enough. So I'm concerned about that. Can you help me with it?
Yes, so, um, I would, I, I think what was shared was never a, that we were going to replace all of our tables with desks. But we had enough furniture within the vision to be able to maintain the three feet of distancing that's required for social distancing. There's nothing required about having a desk to maintain three feet of distancing. So that was the intention behind the response to your questions.
Okay, um. Anyway, I've got, I've got this, the one with the pictures that are showing that, um, for the different scenarios to give different ideas, okay? The other thing, um, that I want to ask about this is the PPE. Uh, as we've been reading and, you know, getting information, one of the things that, um, we got information or have seen is, you know, Facebook and other, um, publications and communications is like, for instance, Henrico. They decided, um, from what I understand, that, um, not getting enough of the PPE and it being on backwater, it was going to take too long to get it, to be able to start their year or even get into the ver- um, the year face-to-face so they can, that was one of the things that helped them decide on staying virtual for the first nine weeks. Do we have all of this PPE, all the mask, the, um, hand sanitizer, the cleaning, do we have all this? Are we still waiting for it? The, and I mean, we're reading about the Plexiglas, it's in short supply now because they started back with Plexiglas with the, um, uh, supermarkets and, um, places of that nature was full, you know, so they don't even have enough Plexiglas to, um, there's a short supply in the country. So that's my concern.
Yes.
Another one of my concerns.
Understand your concern. I'll, I'll have to get, uh, so Mr. Steve Lapack has assigned the PPE, uh, that he can talk about where the order request is. So Farrell, I think, can cover the PPE part of it.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
We have, uh, ordered all the PPE, which is, uh, adult mask for employees. Uh, we're ordering three per employee. They meet, uh, uh, PP, they meet the CDD, CDC specs. We're also ordering, uh, masks for students. Uh, they will be sized, uh, for small and, uh, and then larger size of students. We've ordered all the cleaning and, uh, other kind of supplies like that. Uh, and all of the things that we've ordered will be coming in toward the end of August. So if, those things will be in certainly before we have students and we have staff coming into the classroom. We've been assured by the suppliers that we're ordering from that they can, they can deliver and they can meet our request.
Okay, uh, and that includes the Plexiglas and those kind of things that you're going to need?
We've ordered, in, in terms of Plexiglas, we've ordered some, uh, shields, but the Plexiglas is, uh, that's something that, uh, Mr. Freeman would have to deal with. If you're talking about Plexiglas that might be in a common area where some, I, I don't, I can't answer that one, but I think that one's probably okay.
So you have been assured by your vendors, you're going to get all of this PPE?
Yes, we have.
Okay, um. I, uh, I have some other questions of some others. I don't want to, you know, take all of it, and so it's for other people, but if you want to go ahead and let other people?
We'll come back. Thank you, Mrs. Ricks. Mrs. Anderson.
So, um, Mr. Freeman, has there been any thought on the tables that we have to use in installing Plexiglas? I've seen pictures on, on, uh, the, you know, on, on the internet where they've created sort of an X in Plexiglas that would distance students that have to sit at tables. And again, you know, I know that that, that's expensive, but it is a way of distancing students without having to order desks. Uh, we could be able to do that if we utilize the tables that we already have. I don't know if we can get the Plexiglas for that, or if you, we want to speak to that just a little bit, the Plexiglas thing?
Yeah, so the, the requirement is to be able to get three feet of distancing. Or we can get three feet of distancing regardless of what the furniture is, we're going to get three feet of distancing. If we find ourselves in a position where we can't get three feet of distancing what we have, you look outside that classroom within the same school. Is there something within that school that can be moved around or adjusted? If it's not within that school, do we have it somewhere else in another school within the division to be able to move it over? So lots of options. Circling back to the Plexiglas question, if that is where we get to from a mitigation standpoint, we will do what it takes to be able to get to appropriate distancing. But the goal is to get to three feet of distancing, uh, as a structure for our classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
And we, uh, just to follow on steps, so there are some uh, things, and we experienced this during ESY over the summertime, where you need a little bit more close face-to-face instruction. And we've already, in those in, uh, instances, put Plexiglas barriers in place, uh, to be able to further support the environment.
Yeah, because I, I, I was concerned originally about reading groups, for example. And that's a, a very good example where you really need a little closer instruction. Uh, and I thi- I, I envisioned reading groups possibly, you know, having a reading table with Plexiglas separating people, but you could still see and talk and it's just, just the suggestion. So, um, my next question has to do with training of, of teachers. Uh, Dr. Rogers. Have these training sessions already started? Because I'm hearing from teachers that they have not. And, and several teachers have indicated to me that they're anxious to get started with training sessions because they would need time to, you know, um, utilize it, think about it, you.
So yes, our teachers have been training all summer on the central training. That has not stopped. So especially at the elementary level, we do have, it may be speaking of like the nuts and bolts and how to, what do's and don'ts in the virtual environment, that essential session that I spoke of that Dr. Roberts and I, uh, our teams are partnering with. Uh, we do have plans to, uh, offer that to our, our staff at our Digital Learning Summer Summit, which will take place on the eighteenth of this month. And then it's also going to be mandatory on September first. So they will get that mandatory training. But in terms of content and curriculum, they've been getting that all summer.
Okay.
Yes.
And then while you're up there, just real quick, um, I'm, I'm concerned about parents who work, uh, would, so asynchronous, asynchronous learning activities, uh, being taped so that working parents have an opportunity to do that with their children when they get home. Is that available for just about everything that's happening throughout the day, even synchronous being, being taped so that in case a child misses it, they could at least watch it later on?
So the team is planning for accommodating those students who would not be able to participate in the scheduled synchronous learning activities. Uh, some synchronous learning activities will be, makes sense to be recorded, others of them may not. But we are train, planning to train our teachers on how to record synchronous lessons as appropriate and make them available for those families. We are also planning opportunities for the evening for those families who can, for whatever reason, uh, have their children participate in the synchronous learning activities at this scheduled time. And we're still trying to work out what that looks like and which staff will be able to work with that. But we are very cognizant that we do have some families that just won't be able to have their children participate at that uh, scheduled time with those, uh, synchronous learning activities, and we will certainly make them available to those, uh, families as appropriate.
Okay, I, I'll relinquish now and come back later.
Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Melnick does have her hand raised on the Zoom.
This is a question for Dr. Bergen.
Ms. Melnick, we have Ms. Felton first. You will be called momentarily.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you called my name.
Yes, uh, uh, Dr. Bergen, could you go back to the student registration and verification results? And I'm interested in that thirty percent that you mentioned had not committed or had not registered. And my question to that is, is that, is, did you mention it, was that high school or middle school or just high school or all students?
It, it was all three levels. So I can go, I can, uh, I think I can read it off of my.
And while you're doing it, I will not, just for my, uh, again, do you go through the protocol for what you're going to do and how you're going to proceed with those thirty percentages that have not committed yet?
Yes, ma'am. It's thirty-one percent at elementary, twenty-eight at middle, and thirty at high school. So roughly three out of ten kids. As an anecdotally, it was fifty percent hadn't responded. What was that, a couple of days back? Yeah, we had a big bounce, you know, in the last twenty-four hours. We expect another bounce. Our staff, our counselors are back in the buildings this week. The protocol you're asking about, we have counselors in the buildings, we have principals and assistant principals, we have office staff. We are ringing telephones. So we're reaching out to parents who are holding out because they still have questions or concerns. Um, we did have, we were well attended on the Monday night series for gifted and, uh, academy programs. We had eleven hundred people participate. Many of those folks were listening for an explanation or a question to be answered and then, you know, turned on their computer and, and did their verification. So we are confident, Dr. Robertson is confident, that with the amount of people we have working the phones, that we're going to, our goal is a hundred percent. So that every student's parent will make the choice for themselves. They have till midnight Wednesday to do so. So we'll continue to phone them tomorrow if they haven't completed it by tonight.
I, I appreciate you saying that one hundred percent is your goal for these students to be calm. You know where my concern lie? And those law students and those students that we are not the engagement and making access. So with that said, um, I know you along with the, uh, council department going to do it robust. Uh, calling out to them because I am concerned about it as well. And saying, could you give me those numbers again? You said high school is what now? Thirty, what percentage?
It, it's on your handout, Ms. Felton.
Okay.
So I'll have to go back to my handout.
I, I'll pull it. If it's on my handout, I can.
I think you can just, I mean, it's roughly thirty percent by level. It, it doesn't fluctuate by more than one or two percent.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And my second question, and I'll be through. Um, Dr. Rogers spoke on, you, you're talking about attendance, um, being calculated of students, uh, it's going to be, uh, that, that's hundred percent what they need to do. But when we're going to record, if, if you're going to record the, uh, lessons or whatever, how will the attendant, uh, be, um, recorded? How will they know they will be on the same, uh, metrics as coming in?
So, so no, ma'am. We, we'll have to have maximum flexibility when it comes to taking attendance. So of course, that's one mechanism with which we can take attendance is having students physically present during the synchronous learning activity. The expectation is that our students engage in a learning which could be synchronously and/or asynchronously as well. So for example, if a teacher has assigned a student, uh, an assignment in Schoology and they weren't able to participate in the synchronous learning activity that day between ten and ten-thirty, then the expectation is that that student engage, uh, in Schoology at a time that's most convenient for them. And then, of course, we are certainly working to try to, uh, make arrangements to engage with those students who did not have an opportunity to engage in a synchronous learning op- opportunity, uh, at a later time than during the day. So there'll be multiple opportunities that we can capture whether a student has been engaged in a learning. So the state has provided us guidance and verbiage to help identify what attendance really is, as meaning, being, being present, um, for the learning in, uh, different ways. But we have to be able to account for it either synchronously and/or asynchronously.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back with my next question. Thank you so much.
So, Mrs. Melnick, we have two colleagues ahead of you, so just, uh, hang in there with us, okay? Mrs., Ms. Owens?
Great, thank you. The first question is, uh, in regards to the PPE. So I guess maybe Mr. Freeman or, uh, Farrell? The, you mentioned that there are three masks per teacher currently being ordered. Three masks per year per teacher? And then my other question was, can you tell me about the amount of masks being purchased per student? And how we're dealing with that? Are, are we doing three masks per student per year and if they lose those? And if they lose those, then parents provide them? And if they don't have them, then if we can talk a little bit more about what that looks like? Because we know how the school supplies and other items are constantly lost. And I'm just trying to find out what we're doing for the, the strap broke, the whatever. You're in school, are we going to give them another one? Do we have them to give?
Um, w- we uh will also have an inventory of disposable mask. And they will be available on buses. For example, if a student happens to come and try to get on a bus without a mask, they'll be provided a mask. So there will be surplus mask, there'll also be surplus mask at the schools, disposable mask also. Uh, and we will have extra mask beyond the three per person also to replace some masks. These masks can be washed up to fifty times. So each of the three masks, it's a hundred and fifty times that they could be used uh in addition to disposable mask if somebody loses his mask or needs a mask on the day that they, they forgot to bring them. So we're trying to think of everything we could do um to, to make sure that we've got everything covered.
I guess kind of on that same vein, um, and I appreciate all of the work that I see is going into this. It's overwhelming. Um, if we get to a point where we are realizing that for whatever reason our supplies have not reached us in the timeframe that we expected them to. Um, obviously, we're saying that the supplier has said that they're going to get them to us. Um, that anybody who's ordered things knows that sometimes it can, sometimes it can't, things happen. Do we have a, a certain amount already available to us? Or are we looking at the possibility of having to do a, a stop closer to um our actual face-to-face? Since we are not going to say that we have everything in place before we, we move forward, that we're expecting to fill in some of these gaps as we go?
The supplies that we're talking about, specifically the mask, and there's some uh transparent face shields also that maybe some other nurses and other folks like that would have to have. Those to come in uh right after the twentieth, between, I think, the twentieth and twenty-fifth of August. If we find that there's some delay, there were about four uh vendors that uh we have a relationship with who've been dependable in the past. And uh those would always be backup. The issue with the backup like that and ordering and, and insisting on a quicker turnaround is we will have to pay more for the mask, so, but that's our backup plan.
Okay.
Uh, and that's the best we can do right now.
Thank you. Um, I guess the next question I have maybe is for Kip, it's about um program.
Ms. Owens, if we, oh.
If we may, since we're, we would be swishing staff anyway, we'll get everybody their first round.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you, uh, transportation question. Uh, I know several parents were signing up and saying, I might not need transportation, but I'm going to go ahead and sign up for it just in case. I anticipate that once schedules come out and parents, you know, kind of figure out their schedules with this new plan, um, if they change their mind and don't need transportation, what's the process? Do they contact their school? Do they contact the Department of Transportation?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that very clear in an update that we send out to families that, uh, of a, of a path to uh change their, to, to be able to essentially give that seat back.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. Because I know, you know, if there, I know there are a lot of families out there who are willing to take their kids to school if, you know, if, if someone else needs it more. So I, I would highly suggest putting that request out there.
Uh, thank you for that, because we fully understand that some may have put it in there just, just in case. And we really want to get to who really needs the transportation. That'll allow us to work most efficiently.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And then, um, Mr., Dr. Rogers, I have a question regarding um the attendance piece again. Um, I know that you said that there will be flexibility provided on attenda- attendance, and I know you're going to be doing that. But my concern is, how is attendance going to be logged? For example, we have a parent who has a middle school student who's at home during the day by themselves, who are supposed to be on, logged onto their class, but perhaps they aren't. The parent doesn't know. Is that going to be logged in Schoology? Is the parent going to get a notification? How are we going to be tracking that?
Okay, I'll defer to Dr. Roberts.
So I think I might be able to answer that. Uh, I'm working with Mr. Den right now uh on, on creating the best process to share with families and students and teachers in terms of how to take attendance because there's so many possibilities for a student to demonstrate they're engaged in learning beyond being uh in that synchronous session. So we want to create a process where it's understandable for parents, it's understandable for students, it's understandable for teachers, that still gives us the information we need to then demonstrate to the state that our kids are indeed attending and engaged in learning. So that information is being developed, it's sitting on my desk right now. Dr. Spence emailed me earlier and said, hey, where are we with this? And I said, Monday we'll have it, so we're on.
Yeah, as long as we just have a way for parents to know, my kid did participate in class today.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, and if you can just put me back in the queue, I've got more.
Me too.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick, you're on.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. So, um, we have received a lot of emails from teachers who indicated that they, um, that their preference was face-to-face instruction. So for whatever reason, misunderstanding, fear. Um, however, these emails state that that is not actually their preference. So does this skew our data or will we be able to um work this out as we will need more um teachers for uh the V L C?
Good question, thank you. We have six hundred, six twenty, I think I shared with you, that have already expressed an interest in the V L C. The way these numbers are looking, we're going to need a thousand. And we're, we're going to need to recruit teachers to the V L C. If we end up with twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand kids online, we're going to need a lot more than six hundred teachers. So those teachers who said, I, you know, I selected in person, but I was really wrung my hands and I felt an obligation to my school and, with lots of reasons. They, they, I know they're agonizing over this. There'll be an opportunity for more teachers to be in the V L C, long and short of it.
Thank you, that's it, Madam Chair for me.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Riggs.
Um, I have so many questions, um, sorry. But, um, you were talking about, I guess, Dr. Rogers, you were talking about um content training? Or training and that you, they've had it, but, and you mentioned nuts and bolts. But as far as really the virtual pedagogy that they really need, they're not getting that yet. And that's very, it's a big concern that I am getting and that we're all getting from teachers. They aren't getting the training that they're, and they're really um freaking out about that because they're, they're like, we need it now. Uh, it's the same, you know, regular training that they get, you know, the summer before they start regular school. So it's, they don't have any specific training that they've gotten yet, and it's um getting too close.
So we do have training plans. I want to just be a little clear, as I shared before. We've started training with our teachers on how to teach virtually uh back in April. So every Monday was dedicated to providing uh professional learning opportunities for our teachers. So they should have been getting, uh, we planned for them to get professional learning on how to teach virtually there. So it's kind of new. Uh, in April, we did uh have our I T S S train on the learning platform. So that may be where a little bit of the uh concern is on how to use Zoom properly and how to use the other virtual uh conferencing tools properly and what are the instructional strategies that accompany it. So, and I, I want to be cognizant of the fact that one of the advantages that we have in Virginia Beach is that we've had Schoology. And Schoology has been our primary learning management platform, whereas other school divisions have not had the luxury of that. So for example, uh, in some of our surrounding school districts, they've had to create uh five essential sessions that all of their teachers and the entire school division have to take before they start school. So I think that would, may be where a little bit of that is coming, coming from. The content is absolutely not changing, whether we have to teach in a virtual environment or face-to-face environment. We have to uh provide our teachers with uh updates on curriculum uh that we get from V D O E, updates on our curriculum that we've made changes to as a result of our extended school closure. I think what they haven't had specifically is the thou shouts of virtual teaching and learning. In other words, what are the do's and don'ts in the virtual setting and environment? What are the mental expectations that we're requiring of you as a school division? And that is something that we didn't do during the emergency learning plan. So as I shared before, uh, we have it planned for an optional session for teachers for our digital learning, uh, digital, I always confuse it, a digital learning summer summit uh on the eighteen, where they will get just what you're talking about. And then again, on September first. And then the plan is, at that training, that we have an opportunity for our teachers to self-assess because some of our teachers are absolute rock stars, and you can find that out on Twitter. They're killing it.
Yeah, I've seen it, I mean, I've been keeping up with Twitter.
Do a one-size-fits-all and says, you know, hey, we got three trainings that everybody in the school division has to take because all of our teachers are not at that point. We have, we have a, a wide range of expertise in the division, and we certainly want to take advantage of that. So I would say if, if uh you have teachers that have come to you, that ask them to please reach out to their I T uh S and their building and just be honest and straightforward with them, say, hey, I'd like this, that, and the other thing. But uh the training is coming, and we do plan to have ongoing training uh throughout the course of the school year to help mitigate their concerns and to make sure that they're being successful throughout the school year.
Okay, can I ask one more question? Okay, and I'm, I'm not sure who this is for. I don't know if it's for you or for Dr. Robertson.
I'll just stand up here.
Um, in contacting the parents that have not signed up one way or the other. They're being, uh, many are being told from one, understand that they can go back to op- that if they choose option one, they can still go back to option two at any time if they want. Um, is that true?
They're being, I'm, I'm sorry, they're being told what now?
If, if they're try, and getting them to go ahead and sign up, they're being told by some principals that they choose option one at any time, they'll be able to go back and, and to go to option two. Is that true?
So that's an interesting question because we have not directed our principals in that, in that way. But let me throw a scenario out to you. I am a parent and I chose option one.
Mm-hmm.
And I go back in option one and because of circumstances beyond my control as a student, let's say grandma moves in the house. My circumstances have now changed, not my circumstances, but my living arrangements have now changed because now grandma's in the house. And so a parent may call the school and go, look, I know I picked option one. But grandma's in the house, we love grandma. We can't have little Billy running around and, and we're just not comfortable. Can we put Billy, can we change Billy to option two? We're going to do everything we can to help that family get where they need to go. It is much easier for us to move kids from option one into option two under those unique circumstances because we don't have the physical constraints we have in putting kids in seats in option one. We don't have that in option two.
Right.
Which is why I noted earlier, there's going to be larger class sizes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, technically, if you have twenty-five students who normally enter a class, but only sixteen can se- sit this year in that class, that means nine need to go in another class of twenty-five. So now you're talking thirty-plus. But we're trying to figure out how we can do that and what type of configurations we can use in the virtual learning center to mitigate that. So another rumor going around, which, I don't know how these things start, but okay, so let's address it. Um, at the high school level, uh, you could teach four classes in the virtual learning center if, and that's correct. Well, how is that fair? Because they only teach three classes if they're face-to-face. Well, let's think about that. If you have a hundred and twenty students assigned to you in three classes, and that's a large number, let's say more realistic, a hundred and ten kids in three classes in the virtual learning center, would you rather have those spread over four groups? So make the size more manageable, or do you want them in three? And so that's the type of discussions we're going to have. In the best interest of kids, it's much better to take those a hundred and ten, split them over four sections than to split them over three sections. Because as someone who's taught online, it's a huge difference between teaching twenty-nine faces and twenty-five faces. So, uh, we're going to have to be extremely flexible. And, and when I say we, it's a collective we. It's teachers, I talked to my two principal, two of my three principal groups today, and I started out with one message. We are team elementary school. It's no longer team Kingston, team Newcastle, we are team elementary school. We will live and die on the backs of our brothers and sisters across the other schools. We have got to operate like that. And we are team Virginia Beach, we are team group. And that may mean that sometimes you have to give up somebody for a year to go serve at another school because that's in the best interest of the division. And we need everybody to kind of take that approach.
Okay, I appreciate you um making that very clear, thank you.
So an assessment here, we're going on five-ten, and we have four in the queue, but we have a twenty-minute uh second workshop to fit in. We can, we can, we can, um, is the, is the will to continue with this route? Okay, so, just so that, in fairness to staff to offer, but please staff lay in too because later, we don't know, is later later, we may even go later with this workshop, I don't know yet, but, uh.
That's fine.
Okay, all right then, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Bergen, I think you could answer this. Teachers who teach virtually, um, or Dr. Robertson, I'm not sure. Will they be given preference once we all, if we ever get back to normal? Will they be given preference to go back to their home school face-to-face?
So, what, teachers are going to remain tied to their home school no matter where they go. They will absolutely be tied. So you know if a teacher's working in the virtual learning center, teaching kids that don't go to her partic- his or her particular school, we're going to keep them connected to their home school because that's important. They can still teach, they are, they can still coach, they can still be sponsors if they have an interest. We, we have to keep them connected and, and because they're still a staff member at that school.
Okay, thank you.
I think another part of that question is, you know, if we have to shuffle the deck a little bit, right? So let's say an entire fourth grade decides they want to be virtual, uh, and we need to bring fourth grade teachers from another building in to help support face-to-face learning in that building. That, that'd be a shuffling of the deck. At the end of the day, at the end of the year, that teacher would still be assigned back to their home school uh depending on that issue we've talked about before, which is that every year there are some transfers that occur. But that teacher would still be connected to their home school for our planning purposes for the following year.
Okay.
Same thing would go with specialists.
So I like the flexible part. Now, I, I think if everybody knows that they're still pretty, pretty much guaranteed to go where they want to go, I mean, this is all over with. I'm hopeful someday it will be. Uh, Mr. Freeman, are we looking at double runs, uh, as in I E, first load, second load buses? Are we looking at that? Is that a possibility? I mean, you're talking about a bus that used to house, you know, used to be able to carry, um, what, sixty students? And now they're can carrying twenty? Is that about right?
We've included it in our planning factor, but just remember that our planning factor right now is based on not having the actual information of the number of kids that we're going to transport. So we've, we've considered, we really need to close out the registration process and then see what we have uh to be able to transport. We're confident with the adjustments that we've talked about, that we're going to be able to transport the students who have requested transportation, but we got to give it a good look. And we'll give you more of an update at the next school board meeting, uh, because we'll have all the data in at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
Okay. Mrs. Felton.
Thank you. Um, going back to the, um, Chromebooks for the students. And, um, I just need to see if, will the Chromebooks be updated for the students? Or will it be necessary for them to, for that to be done to make sure where we're going now? I know that some of them are still holding on to them correct. So I need to know where we update, because if I'm not mistaken, you said something about having a, a, uh, one-link process for the students as well. So I just want to know, will these Chromebooks be updated while they have them in their hand? Will they need to bring them back in? How will that work? And will they also have I T help assistant? And how, uh, ready will they be there for those parents when they have a problem with that Chromebook or, um?
Sure, sounds good. First of all, good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Chromebooks can be updated at home uh over the internet connection that a family has. They do not need to bring it into a school building. They do not need to bring it into a school building in any way to update that device. Uh, with regards to the link that you were talking about, I believe you may have been talking about, uh, the Class Link program. Is that right?
Could very well be that, so let's go for it.
So, uh, we are implementing Class Link, uh, across the division to answer that question and that need that parents and students have about, I have, uh, six different teachers throughout the day. They're telling me to go to here, here, and here for resources for my students. I need some help in where I need to get to. So we've implemented Class Link, um, uh, teachers are gonna be getting PD on it here coming up. And by the beginning of the school year, it should provide that interface that is similar to how we all work on our phones, being able to very quickly and easily get to exactly what we need to get to.
Okay. So, also, good, and so will, in case, and hopefully not you handled this so well, will IT help be, uh, accessible for parents or students if something go wrong with their?
Absolutely, a hundred percent. Uh, and beyond that, uh, we're actually going to be extending the hours of our help desk to six-thirty PM so that individuals and families, as their, uh, you know, families have typical workdays and such, and when, uh, they, when mom and dad get home and they need, uh, they catch up with their student and they'll let them know, I need some help with something, we're gonna be available and ready to assist them even beyond, uh, the normal typical working hours.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to reiterate what Dr. Robertson said about flexibility. And this is what I'm looking for, because we don't all have the same hours, we don't all work at the same time. So it will be, um, helpful and supportive to the parents that know that you're gonna be there for them to handle this. And thank you so much.
Absolutely, no problem.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Um, and I will throw in that IT was incredibly helpful, uh, in my experience, uh, this, uh, this past end of the school year. Um, I guess my next question is, uh, back to Kip. I've had questions about, uh, specific programs maybe not being available to students who, um, are choosing the virtual option, particularly, uh, questions about the ROTC program and Spanish immersion programs. Can you talk a little bit about what is and isn't available and what we're doing with that?
Sure, and I can't speak specifically to the ROTC program, I need to do a little bit more research on that. But the, uh, Spanish immersion program, um, well, I can just say that we're, every effort is gonna be made to provide the same opportunities that, uh, would occur for option one students as for option two. That's the, the, the company line that we're sharing, um, with all parties involved, and that was certainly expressed last evening. So with regards to the Spanish immersion program, uh, it's gonna look a little different, uh, because, uh, especially at the elementary level. Um, so the approach that we're taking is to focus more on communication. That's listening, speaking, reading, writing, and not so much the content area, um, right now. We'll take, we'll take a second look at that after the first nine weeks. But students in options one and two will participate, uh, in more of a communicate, communicative approach to, uh, the immersion more so than the, the math and the science content area, uh, for the, certainly for the first nine weeks.
Thank you for that. And if, um, if when you're able to find out the, uh, response about ROTC, if you could let me know, I, I had parents say that that's what they're being told, and I don't know if, how ROTC is connected with our, um, district as far as if there's a outside component that plays into that.
Yes.
Um, but the classroom portion, I'm being told, is not going to be offered, and, um, it is connected to, you know, some students being able to go to college and,
Well.
I wanna make sure that we are not taking something away from students in our district that is gonna remain for the surrounding districts.
Sure, sure. And I've, I heard that it's not going to be offered, because that's not been a part of any of our conversations.
And I would, I would posit, at the very least, it's not gonna be any, any way dissimilar to what's happening anywhere else that's in a virtual environment.
Right.
So.
Okay.
This is, that is a joint, uh, collaboration with the United States government, with, with the armed forces. And so their, their instructors that we pay, but they make decisions for their instructors, because they remain, um, military personnel in terms of that, how they're, how they're approached, uh, with the Navy and, and, and the other units. But, um, I would say it's probably not gonna be different than other districts. And I'm just gonna add on, because I know there are lots of questions about lots of programs. If, I think I said this before, I'll just say one more time, if we're looking for absolutely perfect, you're barking up the wrong tree, we're not gonna get there. We are, we are building, I'm gonna just keep saying this over and over again, we are building two brand-new school systems from the ground up. And anybody who thinks that it's gonna look like what it looked like in years past is not being real. And so there are going to be some things that aren't available to our students who choose not to come face-to-face. There are gonna be some things that are not available to our students who are face-to-face, who choose to come face-to-face. We're talking about athletics and other things that are problematic at the moment. As you know, the VHSL has delayed athletics. There won't be assemblies, there won't be those things until such time as it's safe to do so. And so I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak to programmatic issues, because nobody in this room, nobody in this community should think it is going to look exactly like it has looked in years past. We are building two brand-new school systems. One that is face-to-face in a pandemic and partly virtual, and one that is fully virtual. They have not existed in Virginia Beach City Public Schools prior to this. And nothing I can do can change that, and nothing you can do can change that. And so we have to accept that there will be changes. And folks are gonna have to go with us on that and understand that you all have, as you all said before, at the last meeting, and that we have the best interest of our parents and students at heart as we're making these decisions. We're not gonna have all the answers in the moment. Lots of things are gonna pop up, and people are gonna call you, and they're gonna say, can you believe this? And we're gonna say, yeah, we didn't have the answer to that, we're working on that, because we're building them from the ground up. And so, you know, some of that, just, if you hear us say, we don't know, we gotta get back to you, we're working on that, or no, that's not gonna be available, those are the reasons why. And we all just have to understand that.
Uh, my other question, I'm not sure who it goes to. Um, we were told that the counselors are back in the building this week, and they're making the calls. Um, are the counselors back in the buildings because the work that they're doing there is not able to be accessible to them to do from, from home? Is there a option for that of having less counselors in the building? Do they all need to be there? Uh, and, you know, is there a reason that they are back in the building? I just, I'm not sure how the stuff works with that.
Well, we can always use and not let Dr. Robertson share. So if we could have counselors in the building, you know, twenty-four hours a day, we'd be able to use them for sure. But certainly for the purposes of, uh, making sure that we had schedules straight. So, Dr. Robertson, you wanna?
So we invite, we invited our counselors who were able to come back, uh, a week early, thanks to, uh, John Mira and Farrell Hansacker approving that request for the sole purpose of contacting families as part of the, the registration verification process. We had many counselors prefer to complete that duty from home, which was fine with us. We had some counselors who wanted to come into their office and, and complete that duty, they just needed a time away. But, uh, we, that's why they're in now. Of course, high school counselors would have reported anyway this week, so they're back to doing those calls, but then getting into their normal routines. And again, if they can work from home, they're working from home. If they choose to come into the office, they come into the office.
So it, it generally is a, a choice for, uh, the counselors?
Yes.
To work from where they can?
Yes.
If, as long as they can meet their, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we're still trying to ensure we're, we are, uh, running a, a building with, with physical distancing and all the safety measures. And if, if there's, if you're able to complete your duties from home, then you should be given that option.
Okay, Mrs. Manning.
Um, so I understand that there are courses that may not be offered virtually. I'm just trying to get an understanding of what those are, because we have had a lot of emails about those, and it's, people are trying to make their, their final, um, choices based upon this information. So is it accurate to say that there are academy classes that may not be offered through the VLC?
No, that's not true.
Okay, so, um, can you give me some examples of courses that will not be offered through the VLC?
Uh, some of the, them that are quite challenging to do would be our courses at the technical, uh, center, like welding classes and the, uh, courses that require a lot of hands-on, um, activity. I think there will, um, there's several, uh, masonry, um, the dental.
But in general, we're able to offer our academy courses?
Those are our courses, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Through the VLC?
Yes.
Well, let's add clarity to that.
Yeah.
So, for example, in the, um, Legal Studies Academy, and I think in Health Sciences Academy and perhaps a few others, there are core courses that students take. So they would take English Science, Social Studies, and Math. There is a layered-on component of that generally in those two academies in particular, but there may be more, and I just don't know off the top of my head, that allow them to be transcripted as academy classes. So for example, and I, this is my own daughter's experience, like Legal Studies, you take History, but it's a Legal Studies history teacher, and they add in all of those kind of legal cases throughout history that they have to study as a part of that, right? So if they're in the VLC, the academy quarters, coordinators have committed to try to work with them first, to try to see if they can get academy teachers to teach those classes. If they cannot, because those teachers don't want them, or we have too many students who want face-to-face instruction, and they need those teachers in the face-to-face environment, then they have committed to provide additional layered-on assignments that would be related to that core course, that can then, the, the VLC teacher and the academy coordinators will work together to provide those, make sure that those are done, and they will continue to get academy transcripts for that, for that course. So we wanna be clear. Also, there are ac- academy-specific courses, this came up the other day, um, uh, where they're, they are working right now to schedule them as second-term courses so that, should we be able to in the second semester, open school back up for face-to-face, that those students would be able to have them then? If that then doesn't transpire, then we would, um, figure out what to do about those virtually. And there are other scenarios where we've talked about doing, using something similar to our distance learning model. So if you've got some students in the VLC and some students who are not in the VLC, put a camera on them, let them watch that simultaneously and take the course that way. So we're looking at a cup, a lot, several different ways to make sure that academy students can have access to those courses if they're not in the VLC. What they've all definitely been communicated is you do not lose your academy seat as a result of selecting the VLC.
And then additionally, with some of those courses that require, uh, industry certifications, what we're, uh, discussing is being able to have students concurrently enrolled in, uh, option one and option two. So when it's safe for them to come back to do the hands-on practicum, that they'd be able to do so.
Okay, thank you all so much for that clarification, that helps a lot. Um, and then my other question is related to special education students. I mean, obviously, um, not being in person is probably gonna be impacting our special education students the most. And since it looks like we probably won't be getting back in person for a while, I, I'm just trying to get more clarity of how we're supporting our special education students, especially our students like who are in the academic foundations classes, things like that, where I just don't see how they're gonna learn virtually. How are we providing those supports and the ability for them to learn?
Well, this goes back to the question that Mrs., she was asked the last time we, um, had a conversation, and, and Dr. Myers-Dobbs shared some, uh, information. And it's, um, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, and I'm just being honest. However, uh, when the IEP teams meet to discuss, uh, all the options available to those students, uh, and they have good, hard, fast conversations about what resources can be provided. So for example, of course, you have additional time, uh, for resource, for, uh, completion of assignments, uh, having access to the, the teacher on, on a one-on-one basis as appropriate, uh, providing additional resources, working with our instructional technology staff to provide, uh, resources for students who have hearing impairments, or resources for students who have visual impairments, um, and providing opportunities for them to be able to leverage the human resources that we have access to, uh, to provide hands-on manipulatives that we maybe have to deliver to them at their homes. And of course, uh, you know, the hope is that, uh, we'd be able to provide an opportunity very similar to what we did with the ESY, uh, opportunity to bring some of those students who need the most support in the face-to-face environment when it's safe to do so. Uh, but, you know, ultimately, it'll be up to the IEP teams to really be creative and think about how to best accommodate those students based on, uh, the accommodations that were set forth and set goals that are appropriate and, uh, meaningful so that students can, um, get the support that they need.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see that those students come back, um, in person as soon as possible. I know we, we had a vote two weeks ago that they can't, but I would like, really like for us to reconsider that and get our students with special needs back into the classroom, um, as soon as possible.
Well, I think it's just important to clarify that we, we'll get as many of them as we need to into the classroom, and we'll certainly try to do that for those students, like the ones that we were serving during the extended school year who have some of those really high needs and high touch.
So if, even if we're still in red, we're gonna still be able to do that?
We, just like we're doing right now. We have extended school year that's been going on this summer.
Right, okay, I just didn't realize that they were gonna still be able to come this fall.
We're certainly looking at the options to accomplish that. I just don't wanna say writ, large special education students, because you're talking about eight thousand students, and they all have very different needs.
Right.
And all of those will be worked through with their IEP teams, but there are some students who we do see the probability that we would need in working with their team and their parents and their, and their support, uh, that we would need to bring them in for something akin to the, it wouldn't be extended school year, but it would be continuing services, right? And so certainly see that as a, as an option and a possibility and a likelihood for some students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick.
Thank you. Um, do we know how many students have, uh, withdrawn from the division?
I don't have a withdrawal number, um, in hand. I do know, um, homeschool number is less at the moment than it was during the last school year. But of course, you get a lot of those come in late August and September as well, so it's hard for us to give you an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but we have fewer homeschool requests at this moment than we had for the last school year.
Anything else?
Nope. Okay.
Mrs. Anderson.
Um, Dr. Spence, you were talking about the academies a while ago, and I wanna ask specifically, because we had these questions that came up yesterday, and as of yesterday, I was still unclear about it. The, the Green Run Collegiate, uh, in Princess Anne High School IB program, and Plaza Middle School IB program. I, I thought that I understood yesterday, when I, back and forth, that, that, uh, that there was a problem with the IB programs not being able to go virtually. Uh, has that problem been worked out? And specifically, the difference between Green Run Collegiate and Princess Anne High School IB program?
So gonna just clarify one thing about Green Run Collegiate.
Okay.
That is a charter school. That is not a Virginia Beach City Public School. It is a charter school, owns and has a charter with you all. And they have their own governing board, and they make their own decisions. So we, we, although we can talk about it, and we are, and obviously, we continue to communicate with them, we work very closely with their administration, um, I wanna make sure we, we separate out that when you, when you're contacted by a charter school parent, you should be referring that parent to the Charter School Board and to the Charter School Administration for those responses. That said, we have an IB program, we can talk a little bit about that and how we're leveraging that conversation to coordinate with Green Run Collegiate.
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Delaney today, and I was not on the, um, call yesterday, but he did share with me that there were concerns about that, and they're still working through that. And as Dr. Spence shared, there's some complexities with Green Run Collegiate as it relates to, uh, the services provided and making the, uh, the expectations for the IBO, the International Baccalaureate Organization. So just from yesterday, um, that has not been resolved, but we're still working on it.
So, so when I get, when we get emails from parents from Princess Anne High School, for example, who say, my student cannot continue with the IB program during virtual learning, is that accurate?
No, ma'am. We are, we are working to make sure that all students are able to participate in their programs for all of our programs.
Okay. I had a question.
Regardless of the option that they choose.
Thank you.
May I, may I add to that, though?
Yes.
Can you elaborate at all at, on what the stickling, maybe stickling point isn't the right issue, but our curiosity is all piqued on what is it with the International Baccalaureate guidelines that are creating this confusion, confusion, or just, uh?
Well, it, I, I believe it has something to do with the manner in which they, uh, test and the timeframe with which they test, and the, and our terms, uh, with the four-by-four. But I have to get one-hundred percent clarification from Dr., uh, from Mr. Delaney, um, because he's been in close communication with GRC and what their parameters are, the, the, the conflict, but.
Well, or Princess Anne, or, but we can be assured that, we can be assured the coordinator there, Ms. Cox, also is, it's all in the process of being investigated?
Daniel has some updated information.
Oh, hello, Mr. Kever.
Good evening. One of the things that, that comes with the International Baccalaureate Program are some complexities that are layered on by the organization itself. And I believe they released some information last night as an organization, and again this morning. We're continuing to work through that, and we'll work with both Ms. Cox and Ms. Patricio at GRC to do everything possible to ensure that students are on the right path. Uh, it's, it is, it is complicated, but it is not insurmountable.
Okay, good. Well, before you run off. Okay, good. Well, before you run off, I mean, just my, my initial instinctive reaction was, we can't be the only division globally asking this question. So, why is IB so unprepared to, to have answers available? This is a global pandemic. That has to be very frustrating for a lot of people.
I would imagine that it is frustrating for a lot of people.
Hard for us to speak, hard for us to speak on behalf of the.
I was gonna say, you don't want me out pining on International Baccalaureate. I, I do think that we have, we have made some schedule modifications as a division, which, which further kind of puts our work into a scenario where we're having to look at things differently than we've ever looked at them before with respect to the four-by-four. So, that, that adds some of that complexity that I was talking about in terms of course sequencing, and how to make sure that things are happening in a, in a similar fashion as it's happened in years past.
So, without committing any of you, though, with the parent deadline tomorrow, the intent form, or is it today, today or tomorrow? So, with some of these academies still figuring out these details, I mean, I would hope that some parents would be given the opportunity, you know, because they, they need some of this information to make an informed choice for their children on Option One or Two. So, how will we handle that? How will, how will we be flexible about that?
So, I will answer that question to say that earlier in the presentation, I shared that we have roughly ten days to complete three months' worth of work. So, in every s- school, the seven years I was a principal at Salem, and the three years as an AP, you always have situations that occur that are unique that you need to work through. But the deadline is the deadline, and then we've got to get work, and we, we can't extend the deadline, because right now, I can guarantee you, my teams are gonna be working Saturday and Sunday, and not, and those aren't in the ten days, so it's gonna be ten plus the weekends. So, we're gonna do the very best we can.
So, the deadline's the deadline, meaning tomorrow, or ten days from tomorrow?
The deadline to declare their, their, their choice is tomorrow night at midnight.
Okay.
And they default to Option One.
Okay, and I had, I had one more question that I didn't get to answer yet. Um, speech pathology, it's very difficult for a speech teacher to, uh, work with a student and get them to, you know, uh, to teach them how to properly form their lips et, et cetera, especially if they're wearing masks. So, um, I was asked by a speech teacher, you know, how, what do they expect me to do? And I actually heard from another speech teacher in another division that said that, um, they were, they were asked to have a computer here, screen here, and the student would actually have a computer spr- screen, sitting in the same room, but they would be, they, they would not be face-to-face, but they would be able to form lips, et cetera, with, uh, students looking at it on. Have, have you all talked about that, and, and has that been worked out?
So, I've not had specific conversations about how speech pathologists conduct their, uh, their roles. However, um, I have seen, uh, speech pathologists working with students, um, during, during the ESY program. So, I mean, they make it happen. Uh, should a student be in Option Two, you do have the capability of having a synchronous opportunity through, uh, some of our, um, video conferencing tools like Zoom and/or Google Meet, where you can have a face-to-face interaction with the student, and you'd be able to, uh, do many, if not all, of the same functions that you would in a face-to-face setting. It's a little more challenging, and you don't have proximity in terms of being able to, um, manipulate, uh, your hands and gestures and things like that. It's just not as easy, but it is certainly possible to do it that way.
Okay, I, I, I'm just asking because, you know, you, when you have speech teachers?
Sure.
Emailing you or calling you.
Sure.
And, um, they were concerned about that. Thank you.
Okay, um, and then we'll, we'll be looking to break soon, so we'll decide on whether we'll be concluding the workshop or continuing it. But Mrs. Riggs, if you could go.
It's just one question, it's for, um, Dom, Dr. Robertson. Um, you, you went into great detail about the, you know, when I was talking about the parents and the one-on-one, and, and moving back to Option One, Option Two, what about teachers? What if something happens with a teacher, and that life changes in their home too? What about them?
So, I would think we would need to take the exact same approach as we would at any time. If you've got a teacher whose circumstances have changed, you're gonna do everything you can to work out a scenario where they can still do their job, because, as I told a colleague the other day, who's not in education, he was like, why can't you just force them all to come back? I said, because we don't have a thousand sitting on the sideline.
Exactly.
So, we gotta work with the ones we have, and we're gonna work with the ones we have.
Thank you.
Okay, so, this is a colleague's question. Uh, are you satisfied with, for today's purposes of having time for workshop questions, that we can officially conclude the workshop and, and, uh, report back for the formal meeting at six o'clock? So, thank you all, staff, for, okay. So, we will, again, reconvene at six o'clock, right back here, thank you.